Next item is approval of minutes for February 20th, 2019.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second in the other discussion. Hearing none in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Next is a review and vote to approve warrants.
Make a motion to approve the payables warrant FY-1935 and FY-1919, payroll FY-1917, and MLP number 24.
Second. I have a motion, a second in the other discussion. Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Our next item is a public hearing. Do you have that, Rock?
Yeah.
Oh, was that 7:15?
Yeah. Steve, Matthew O'T.
Steve, Mass D.O.T., you can come on. Presentation of Malden Street Bridge Project Rehab.
Where would you like me?
You can take a seat right there, just identify yourself.
I'm Steve Ucher. I work for Mass D.O.T. at a District 3 office, which is the Worcester office, Greater Central Mass. I'm the Assistant District Bridge Maintenance Engineer. I assume you guys want to hear about the Malden Street Bridge Project.
I'm guessing what we're here for, yeah?
The bridge actually is located in Holden. It's Malden Street over 190, but it's very close to West Boylston Street. The project itself is a bridge rehabilitation project. It consists of substructure repairs, which is the main support columns, painting of the structural steel, and a deck resurfacing component to it. I guess the big component that affects the town of West Boylston is there will be a bridge closure for approximately 65 days, no more than 65 days, that's what the contract calls out for. There is a detour that's been approved, and I do have a copy if you would like one.
I would think that, I would think we'd like, yeah, a copy of the detour.
I have one copy, I don't know if we can make additional copies, but the detour itself, for the most part, leads down Lee Street, over the Prospect, under 190, down to Shoesberry Street, and then up Bullard, and then wraps back around to Holden to Malden Street.
Chief, do you have anything?
No, I mean, there's only certain ways you can go.
Yeah.
My concerns were about.
The tentative schedule right now is to close the bridge either the first or second or third week of April, weather dependent. The work up top will be involving hydro demolitions, so there will be water involved, so if the temperatures are too cold, we won't be able to accommodate those conditions with the freezing temperature, so as of right now, I think they're looking for the first week, but if weather does push us back, we'll be in the second week, and then, you know, 60 to 65 days after that, the closure will take place.
We could have any closing of Malden Street. Can we?
So, will the 190 be closed from lanes at a time or something like that?
190, there will be impacts to 190. The primary impact to 190 will be nightly closures. When they paint the structural steel, they will have to take two lanes of 190 from 9:00 PM to 4:00 AM, which is a typical closure for that, you know, section of roadway, which doesn't, which works with the traffic counts on that roadway, so that would be pretty much the extent of the 190 impacts, and I believe that will be taking place July-August timeframe. So everything should be open up top once that operations undergo.
And I know there's some different, but are you guys planning on repaving 190? I just drove down there today, it's unbelievable how bad that road is.
What section of, that exact section right there?
No, anywhere from exit four all the way to exit seven.
There is a contract currently in place from exit four up to Loomis River Line.
Yeah.
And it's, I think it's a $25, $30 million contract, there's extensive bridge work on it, and there's going to be a complete resurfacing of that whole roadway, all three lanes.
It's amazing how many potholes are in that road.
It's been a trouble issue for us for the last three or four years.
You don't like the two mile stretch of the right lane where you just drive in it?
I know, you can't really drive on a road.
And just an initial note, two weeks before we close the bridge, we are planning on reaching out to the town and setting up a meeting with our contractor, as well as any town officials that want to attend, so I think the email or the contact will be going to the administrator, I don't have it off the top of my head, but that is something we are looking and planning on doing, so the town is informed of our exact plan of action.
Chief, do you have something to add to this?
Yeah, when you go down Goodell Street into the bridge there?
Yeah.
There's a cul-de-sac specifically built so that the buses can turn around, fire apparatus, whatever. I want to make sure that when you block the road, that you're not on the West Boylston side of that, so we still have access to that. You, have you looked at the area, do you know what?
I haven't been out there personally, but we are putting up type 3 barricades right at the bridge, so we're not going several hundred feet or several, you know, feet off the bridge, it's going to be directly at the bridge. I believe the project calls for paving limits of 50 feet off the bridge.
Right.
So the bridge will be shut down 60, 70 feet off the bridge, so I don't know where that cul-de-sac falls into place.
Well, it's pretty close to, you know, 50, 70 feet, so if you put barriers up, that's fine, but you can't block that cul-de-sac, because that's what we would use, the buses go down and turn around.
Sure.
I know I talked to the fire chief today, in case he couldn't be here, there's houses that are actually in Holden on this side.
Okay.
So he has to set up some mutual aid with the town of Holden, and also our backup mutual aid for Holy Cross, which is a huge area up there, is Holden, so he needs to set up something different, but if fire trucks come down for some reason or ambulance, that's a pretty important access, so when we have that meeting or whatever, you need to pass the word that it should be on the map, that that has to be.
We do have flexibility where we close the bridge down. We don't call out specifically, you know, 50, 60, 70 feet off the bridge, so there is flexibility, I mean, when we get to the time that we're going to end up milling and paving that section of roadway, you know, that might take a day or two, but, you know, if that is an important section, then we can absolutely move the barricades a little further closer to the bridge, so you guys have access to that cul-de-sac.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. If it's a cul-de-sac, there's only one way in and out, right? It goes in and turns around and comes back out the same way?
Right, but the buses go down and back into it?
Right.
Or if someone else needs to turn around, they go down there, so they're not using private property, but if they have barriers on this side, then, on the West Boylston side, then it blocks the whole thing, so they can't do that.
Just so there would be.
There's really no need for them to do that.
Right.
No, we'll, you know, if that is, like you said, if that is important, we'll definitely make accommodations that we're keeping that access open.
Okay. And they don't plow it open, they just plow down.
Like do. So if you can get us a copy of that, you want to email it, you can email it.
It's up to you, whatever, you know, works best. I have a physical copy I can pass along right now, I can also, you know, grab an email address and send a copy over.
Sure, why don't you leave it with me, and I will scan it off to everyone.
One final question. So I assume that Mass D.O.T. are willing to post all the detour signs, the turn air signs, put it in the paper, you know, maybe have the flashing lights out there for at night, I hope you're going to do all that.
Yes, there will be a VMS board right at the bridge, notifying the public that the bridge is closed. The detour plan does call out specific signage for the detour, so that should be all in place, you know, a week or two before the actual detour goes up.
Okay.
And there should be, we will do some public outreach to notify the town of West Boylston and the town of Holden, so everyone's aware of the detour.
So the sign will be right on the bridge telling you it's closed, or a little further?
It's going to be, it's going to be a little, a little further back, but there's going to be several signage saying, you know, the bridge is closed, detour ahead.
Okay.
The detour plan that I provided shows all those signage and exactly where they're going to be located, so it's.
There should be, you know, soft, a soft blockage at the top of Lee and Goodell, and then the hard blockage down at the bridge, so they can't go across the bridge.
Okay.
You can't have people driving down to the bridge and then turning around.
No, because there'll be appropriate signage at that interchange, from what I understand, I'm no traffic engineer, I didn't put that together, but there will be a signage stating that the bridge is closed, left turn only unless, you know, local traffic or something along those lines.
Okay.
If I could ask a question, who is the traffic engineer in charge?
The traffic engineer for the District 3 office is Joe Frawley.
Okay, I know Joe, okay. And can I also ask, what's the distance from the bridge deck itself to the town line?
I don't have that information off the top of my head. I think it's a few hundred feet.
Okay, are there any Holden residences in that few hundred feet?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So you will be, you, West Boylston Police Fire will be covering through a community aid?
Yes.
Okay, mutual aid, okay.
Right.
And Holden obviously is aware of that situation?
Yes, we've been with Holden as well, and they're aware of the situation. I assume they know where their residents fall in place, you know, proximity of the bridge, so.
Are those residences being notified that they will be being responded to with MBE by West Boylston?
That I'm unsure of.
Well, we have the regional dispatch, so they would, would dispatch know that if they?
We'll take care of that, there's only two houses.
Oh, okay.
It's two houses that are.
And if I could ask just one more question?
Yeah.
You're starting the job in April?
It's, excuse me, yes, it's going to be the first or second week of April, weather dependent.
Is there, and is there a reason why they chose April instead of waiting for summer months when schools close?
I believe that the weather will be conducive to the activities going on, and there is a completion date of September, I want to say, for the contract, so the work needs to get done in a timely fashion. It's kind of left up to the contractor, you know, we give them the scope of work, and we basically let them depict the schedule unless there is some, you know, circumstances that they can't work in a certain month.
What, you said September, you said 65 days?
Just for the top portion of the bridge, the whole bridge is being completely, you know, not reconstructed but preserved.
Okay.
So the top portion of the bridge will be closed for about 60, 65 days, and then the beam painting's probably going to take another 30, 40 days, the substructure repairs are going to take another 30, 40 days, they're going to have to put in all the detour signage, there's more painting for the concrete out there, so it's a little bit more than just that 60-day closure.
Okay, is it more involved such as bearings? Are bearings going to be?
Uh, bearings will be painted, I guess the most involved thing would be the bridge, concrete bridge deck preservation, they're going to use a hydro demolition machine, which is high-pressure water, and they're going to take down, I believe, two and a half inches of the whole concrete bridge deck, and pour back two and a half inches of the latex modified concrete back to the original surface.
So two and a half inches, they still require, so you're putting rebar back in, or are you taking the old rebar out?
Uh, the old rebar's going to stay.
Is it epoxy coated rebar, do you know?
You know, it might be black, it depends on when the bridge was built, I would assume it's the 70s, but the nice thing about the hydro demolition is such, the pressure's so high that it cleans the rebar very nicely, so you almost have a gray new rebar up there.
Well, I understood, yeah, it'll clean what you see, but it won't clean all the way around it.
No, no, but they have ones that they can go on the underside of the rebar and clean that.
Underneath the first layer of the?
Yeah, I believe they're going to go underneath the first layer.
Okay, okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, so when you, when you have, when you have that date for that meeting, if you could contact the town administrator?
Absolutely.
And then contact the chiefs and the board.
Get everybody together.
Okay, absolutely, it's not an issue.
Any other questions from the board?
You're not widening out anything, are you, Dave?
No, 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 the footprint's staying the same, everything's going to be the same dimensions, like, it's a preservation project, so like I was saying, it's going to be basically taking down the top part of the concrete deck, they're going to reset some of the carving, they're going to pave the approaches, they're going to reset some of the joints as needed, so the bridge is basically being preserved for additional 20, 30 years, but the footprint of the bridge is going to remain the same, it's not going to be wider, longer, it's not going to act any differently than it acts right now.
Okay.
It's just going to look very clean once we're done, new paint and everything.
You think on Malden Street?
That's what I thought, Malden Street Bridge.
Okay, sir.
Thank you very much, have a good evening, everyone.
Couple more things here, Chief, is that all you have?
Yeah, I want to know what color they're painting, but he left.
Do you have a preference?
Not blue.
I do have a preference.
Consider offer of donation of property located on Blue Ridge Road to the town of West Boylston. Second, take some time.
Basically, we have a gentleman who has offered property on Blue Ridge Road to the town. I sent the information off to the Open Space Committee, they said they had looked at it before, they're not at all interested in it, so I just, we looked at it once before, and we weren't interested, but the gentleman asked again, and I thought I would just run it by you.
Is that the last, on the right-hand side, very top of the road, do you know?
I do not.
Okay. Because I drove up there the other day, and I.
It's a Danielson.
It's the only place it could be.
You take the Danielson exit, right, Route 12, and then the first road goes up on our way.
Yeah.
The agenda said it was wetlands, if I remember correctly?
The whole thing is a wetland, I guess.
Yeah, they've had problems up there before, I guess neighbors dumped their clippings.
Clippings, yeah. And also, it's not a buildable lot, right?
Correct. It's owned by Martin, it's owned by Israel Real Estate.
They built all the houses up here, so if it was buildable, he wouldn't build the house.
It's not a buildable lot, they have a stream and other things out there, and it's about three-fourths of an acre.
Yeah, they also looked at it for a dog park, but that didn't meet the requirements of what they need either, so.
So what, what kind of use we could have if the town?
That's why I sent it to Open Space, I thought if anybody could think of something, it would be them, and I, my thought was maybe dog park, but they said, you know.
How many tax we are getting of that property?
It's on here.
I can imagine it's a module.
Axible value is, it's taxed at $106,000.
$106,000.
That's the value.
The value.
That's the value.
So probably 1,500-ish.
But even if it's not a buildable lot, do you get that?
Close to two.
It also has a betterment on it, so the total is $4,022.35.
On a $106,000 lot?
Well, you're adding the betterment in there as well, that'd be the whole thing.
So I would think we're better off leaving it in his name, so we can collect the taxes.
Well, I, if, I didn't bring my printed agenda, but is the, are the taxes in arrears right now on that? I thought I read that. Even if they are, I still wouldn't be interested in taking it, because you can't use it for anything, and then we have the liability of having to take care of it.
Exactly.
See if the DCR wants to take it, swap it with them.
We'll take it, and it's what.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do have past due taxes, which also show the betterment, it's not a buildable lot. So we have.
And they're giving it one way or the other.
The, it's taxed at $1,282.47, for 18, for 19, it was $1,684.52, and then you put out the betterment onto that, but it looks as though we have.
So the 4,000 is two years' worth of taxes.
Correct, and the betterment.
I'm making motion now to accept the property.
For a second.
Motion and a second, so is the, are we going after them for the back taxes, or is it still too early?
I, Bonnie usually goes after everyone at the right time, it must not be time, because otherwise she would have them on a list.
Okay. So a motion and a second, any other discussion?
So do you think we cannot take it and swap it with the DCR?
They may not, they may not accept it? No, if they wanted, they probably would have taken it before it got to us.
How about, we could ask for a cemetery land, you know, some other place.
Any other discussion? Hearing none all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not a public hearing.
Public notice is hereby given in conformity with the requirement of general bylaw of the town of West Boylston, Article 23. The public hearing and the notice that the Board of Selectmen will meet on Wednesday, March 6th, 2019, at 7:15 PM for the purpose of considering amendments to the fee charges by the Building Department, including buildings, electrical, and plumbing fees. The meeting will be held in Selectmen's Meeting Room 210 of the Town Hall, 140 Worcester Streets, West Boylston. For additional informations or review the proposed changes, please contact the Office of the Town Administrator. All interested persons, groups, and agencies are invited to attend.
Okay, would you have the building inspector?
Yes.
You're on.
You have before you some changes I wanted to make to the fees charged for building permits, as well as plumbing and electrical. In order to keep up with what other towns are doing in the area, and to make our fees comparable to them, I made some changes to our original fee schedule, and they're, for the residential portion, they're, they're very, very minimal changes, but on the commercial side, I went up quite a bit, and I tried to streamline it a little bit. For instance, some of the fees were based on how many fixtures were in a house, or in a commercial building, and we'd have to count every single one of them and charge per, so I worked with the inspectors to find out how much to charge to take care of that portion of the fees, because it was just getting too complicated. So, for instance, if you want to go down to the commercial plumbing fee, and it was $150 base fee plus $50 for each required inspection, and we went up to $250 for the base fee, up to 20 fixtures.
I'm sorry, one second. I don't think we all have.
Who have the copies?
You don't have that one?
No.
Was that in our?
You should have that.
That's not.
Do you want to make?
I have the survey.
Do you want to make copies?
I can make copies from that.
I sent this out as a separate email to you.
Do you want me to make copies?
Okay.
This was the, this was the one sent down on Monday, yes. Yeah, it's on the email.
But you should have received, either by email or mailbox or wherever, the towns and their fees around our area, as well as two sheets with the blue header lines on it, that we worked out these new numbers. So I was about to tell you to look at the commercial plumbing as an example. Right now, it's $150 base fee plus $50 for each required inspection, and when I talked to the inspector, he was, instead of charging for each inspection, just come up with a base fee with a base number of fixtures. For instance, it's a $200, $250 base fee, it'll cover up to 20 fixtures. That'll relieve us from having to go through every fixture, count them up, and it was time-consuming, and sometimes we'd miss them, and it just, it was just, it wasn't very, very effective. So we came up with this 20 fixture fee of $20.50. Then after that, it's more than 20, then we can do a plan review of it, and charge, and this is not on your sheet, and I apologize for it, it's a $5 for each additional fixture above 20. And that way, it would make it a little bit more friendly to figure out how much it's going to cost for their fee. This is, will also include free inspections, and then if there's other inspections that are required or re-inspections, then we would be charging $60 per inspection rather than the previous $50 per inspection. We're also working on, and I had talked to John Hadley about this, and I'm going to look into a couple more things with the commercial electric, working with that base fee also. Right now, we kept it at $150, but I'm going to talk with Mike when he gets back from vacation, and see if we can go, bring that up to 250 and make it comparable to the plumbing fee. And other than that, there really isn't too much more, it's all self-explanatory.
How do we compare another, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
We're, we're very, very similar to everyone around us.
The only thing, other thing I was talking to George about was the plan review.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Because, to me, the commercial plan review, we only, we charge in $500, and it's way, it's a lot more work than that, because the fire chief has to look at it, the police chief has to look at it, you have to spend, you know, hours and hours of, well, looking at it, so I thought we should charge $100 for a commercial plan review.
That doesn't, this doesn't, does that fall into the building inspector, does it fall into this public hearing?
It's all fees.
Yeah, because, it's not, so it's not on here, that, what John's talking about?
But no, we were, we had talked at.
So maybe we should continue the public hearing.
But don't you have a line item in your fees now for plan review?
Yes, we do, it's five, right now, it's 500.
And this is, this is all fees, so you could use.
All fees, yeah. But the numbers, we are talking, as John mentioned, bringing that $500 figure up for plan review.
Okay.
So that's not on your, on that published information, but that's something we're talking about, working.
What do other towns charge for a plan review?
They, they vary, Worcester, for instance, it was $1,000 for theirs, so.
And that's, that's a minimum.
Minimum.
It's usually a lot more than that.
Did, did we have a comparison chart to other towns?
Not on the, on the plan, we had a comparison chart on all the other fees, yes.
So maybe we can continue the.
You can continue, that's certainly.
Maybe we'll, can, continue it, will our next meeting be?
I could get everything together by then, yes.
Or if not, we can go.
And the other thing, Jordan, I talked about was the, the primary inspector raising their inspection fee to $35 per inspection, so, right now, it's 30, correct?
30, yes.
So raising to 35 for the primary inspector.
Right.
I thought the lead inspector, they're the ones that are up there all the time, and that makes it very compatible with all the towns, and what other inspectors get paid.
So do you want it to continue the public hearing until the 20th, that would be our next meeting?
I would rather you put it off to the first meeting in April, because next, the 20th, we have a lot on the agenda already, we have the auditors coming in, we're going to have an open discussion, and we're going to do the budget.
So you want to, what is it that you want to look at that's not presented to us to continue the hearing?
I just want to.
Mentioned two or three different fees.
Yeah, okay, what I would like to do is to check on the plan review fees for the other towns.
Okay.
Because I didn't spend a lot of time looking at that. I also want to look at the, the electric, commercial electric base fee, we have it staying at $150, I want to make sure that that's what the electrical inspector felt was fair, and it's something he could work with, and then, and that's it, basically, those two things.
Well, besides talking to the electrical inspector, why don't we see what other towns charge?
For.
For that electrical one.
Yeah, yeah.
But then also ask Mr. Capone.
It should be, it was on that list, but I want to make sure that this is not, I booked for the 150, it. for the one fifty, that it, um, that it actually is two fifty. I, I want to make sure to verify that.
Do they charge different things like a hundred twenty-five dollars and plus a thousand dollars? Thirteen twenty-five per?
What I'm trying to do is get a base fee that will cover all of the fixtures. We don't have to count them up and, and recalculate everything every time we have a permit come in, a permitting application come in.
And the only reason, I was talking about the commercial fees, like the plans, stuff like that, you can sample the senior center. I mean, the inspector's been there fifteen times, something like that, you know, going back.
And it's all under the five hundred?
It's, it's all under one thing, so, I mean, I, I think that's more than fair.
And the grossed out also, the grossed out, I've been there over and over again for all kinds of different things, especially re-inspections, a lot of times come up, uh, for big projects like that.
You go, there's something that's not ready.
Yeah, that, he's either not ready for me or he didn't do what I asked him to do.
So this, this comparison I have here, maybe there's another page, it kind of, this is just building fees. This doesn't look like it's, doesn't show, it doesn't have electrical fees, right, John? This, this just says, commercial.
You have the same one. Electrical. Yeah, yeah, electrical cost, construction cost, you know, fees.
Yeah, we don't have that. Well, why don't we, um, continue it, yeah.
So make motion to, uh, April what?
Second. Third.
April two?
Yeah.
Second.
So, before we, uh, no, we don't need to do public comment because we still haven't opened session, but are you going to be considering raising the, um, hourly rates for the inspectors?
Uh, per inspection, yes.
Then we need to see a survey on that as well.
It, that's what I was, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, have a motion, a second to continue till the third. Any other discussion? There are none, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, sure, thank you. Okay, review two thousand nineteen traffic count program. Consider whether you would like to add up to three additional counts. I guess we would, but I just didn't know where.
So this on the, the mass, uh...
CMRPC.
CMRC, see, the annual thing they'd give us?
I did. I sent this off to the police chief and to the transportation, the chairman of the transportation committee to see if there was anything that they wanted to add. I didn't hear anything back from either one of them yet.
So you do these traffic count studies and it shows traffic is increasing. What are they used for? What, what is the end, all right, so that's great. The corner of Franklin and, and Route Twelve, where there's accidents galore, you look at it and it's been, we studied it three times and the traffic counts have gone up, obviously, and, but doing this, why? I mean, I understand CMRPC is doing it, but besides generating the number of cars, what is it used for?
Um, I, I think that something we've been giving to the transportation committee, I think they're working to see what we can do out here to eliminate the, the, um, the number of accidents that we have.
State owns the road, though, i- it's, it's...
But we do need to have...
They do, but they, at one point, we're looking at a one-way, they, they looked at...
Oh, I, you know, I, that's why the liquor store has you, you know, that's been there for three years, has, you can't turn left out of here because, in anticipation of that, but...
It does.
People do anyway.
But, you know, one thing, Pazzy, like the plan about reduce this, if someone's coming in for business, they want to locate a business to do something like that, that say, you know, the traffic, say they look back at this traffic scene and say how many cars go by.
How about when we go to the state to try to get work done, to, isn't this, doesn't this help us?
I'm sure it backs up your application, it gives you, you know, say, this is what's going on here, you know, this is, you know, any glance or anything that we would, any tip projects as well.
So with that said, what would be the other?
So I, I'll make a motion to de- to defer to whatever the transportation committee thinks the other three should be, since this is what they do.
Well, I, I would also, again, I wish the chief was still here, but maybe reach out again to the chief, show him the list and see what, um...
Or even to say, you know, be, uh, change that to a, whatever the transportation committee and the chief, chief of police decide should be added to this count, we could just defer to them.
So this is what they're doing, huh?
So when do they do the, uh, counts?
Um, I think they do it throughout the rest of the year. It's, I think it's the upcoming yearly projects on the, on the towns.
Because like, this is, uh, Lee Street South on Goodell Street, they do it in April.
Do you like me to get the timeframe?
Yeah, I just...
So, Sherma, for the recording, I do like to say a couple of places. So the one is, you know, One Forty, Route Twelve, this side of the road, near that Cumber, uh, used to be the honey farms.
That's right, yeah.
That road.
That's right, yeah. I'm sorry, I don't know.
And also the... Route Twelve South, and, and also, you know, I do, you know, I'm on the transportation too, but for the recording, I'm saying, this one is the bad intersection, the Franklin.
With that one we've done last year.
One Forty, Route Twelve and Franklin. And also, you know, if they could do it on a, you know, like John said, you know, and not on a midnight September, you know, the...
No, it sits there for three, three months or something, a couple of months at least.
So if they could do it on a summer times, it would be great.
Like, say, one on Lee Street, South of Goodell, they're going to do, and they're going to be doing the detour at the same time.
Detour, no.
Yeah, that, right, so that one.
So those, those...
We can, we can tell them about that.
The, um, the counts are going to be done between April and November on weekdays.
Yeah. You know, if they could do it on a...
That's what a count is, that's not, that's an actual count on the street, you put, right?
Yeah. The strips, yeah, strips. So those two, you know, I think, you know, important. The, uh, the one is the triangle. Route Twelve, Franklin, One Forty.
It says, it says, Route Twelve South of One Forty, Route Twelve South of Wal- Walmart.
Yeah.
Route Twelve between Route One Forty and Route One Ten, Route Twelve at Sterlingtown Line, Route Twelve and One Forty north of Central Street. So I think everywhere.
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is, you know, this one, Franklin, goes straight, One Forty, Franklin, and then Route Twelve. So that's the area, you know, we get more accidents.
I suppose there's nothing in Prospect Street.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, we do have one more, let the transportation committee can deal with it.
Yeah, I, the one you just mentioned, is it covered?
No, they can, they can...
Route Twelve South of Route One Forty covers them.
Yeah. They haven't done it.
It's on the list, though. It's on the list for this year.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. They want to know, you know, which, which three we will be, we will be preferring. They are not going to do all of them.
No, 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 they're doing all of these.
They're telling us to add three.
And they're asking us if we want to put three more.
Yeah.
In addition to these twelve, we, as the, as the board of selectmen, can vote to ask them and they will automatically add three more locations within town.
Well, how about Prospect Street?
Prospect at where?
That's what I was just thinking, from, uh...
To Holden Line to, what's the line?
Holden Line.
No, the Worcester Line all the way to...
Um, what was it? Willam and Prospect to, uh, Franklin? Isn't that the...
The, the counts are in a specific location. And it's going to be...
So if it's not, if it's just across, if it's just across Prospect, you get people going both ways, right? So then what they put, oh, I think they put a, they might put a start one and an end one so they know how many tra- I don't know.
They didn't have the Frank- Franklin Street, right?
That was done, Franklin Street was done last year. If you look at this stuff that was done last year, that was one of them. And then it was done a couple, I'll say, three times in the last ten years maybe on that list.
So it says, please provide specific locations of the roadway where the counter should be placed in returning your closed entry.
What I could do is I could ask the chief, say that the board is interested in doing a count on Prospect Street. What area do you recommend?
I think it asks, Mr. Crowley said, you know, leave it to the transportation committee.
No, I think he said the transportation, including the chief of police.
With, with the concurrence of the chief of police.
Yes, yeah. Should we bring it back in front of us or no?
Well, I need to return, we need to return this to them by April first, so...
Would have to be on the, by the twentieth meeting?
You said it was full, so...
Yeah, but if we ask them...
Sure, we could.
I mean, I, I don't think it's necessary for us to, for it to come back before. We have a whole transportation committee. If they make a recommendation to us endorsed by the chief of police that says, this is where your three additional counts should be, are we going to disagree with that?
Yeah, what if they say they don't want Prospect Street? Yeah, I mean, I don't know why they...
They'll do it next year.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I think Prospect Street and two others.
I mean, we can certainly tell them, you know, give it, put it back to the transportation committee and say, the board believes we should look at Prospect Street. Where do you think on Prospect Street? Focus on that, but...
The two sides, they're really, they, they cover pretty much all over the town. I mean, this one, yeah, possibly. Okay.
So you need a motion or anything, or?
Do we need a?
You can make a motion, sure.
Didn't I make a motion?
Yeah, I think he did. Send it to transportation. You want to just add?
Oh, sorry.
You want transportation and the police chief.
If you could add, uh, with a focus on Prospect Street.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any other discussion? There are none in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with knowledge, uh, Wachusett Watershed Regional Recycling, that's six month update.
Yeah, per our agreement with DCR, um, we now get a written update in February and then they come in annually in August and give an in-person update and it's included in your agenda. If you have any questions, let me know and we'll get back to them.
Do we have any questions, I think John's? Uh, general update on the senior center. It's just, it's done, pretty much.
It's pretty much done, we got a few small issues to work out and, uh, we have a meeting tomorrow morning, we'll figure out what's going on.
We'll have to take possession of it soon.
Yeah, very soon.
And then I think they'll pass the date now, so we have to talk about that also.
Yeah.
So the public knows it's done, but the landscaping is not done. That's not going to be done until spring.
Landscaping, parking lot, everything else there. Okay, no invoices?
No, no fix, date fixed, but the open? Grand opening?
Well, I think, um, once, I, no.
That's a question will be, you know, people are asking.
Is the grand opening for the senior center?
Well, I, that's, that's news to us.
We haven't decided on that yet.
We, the, the committee's been talking about it.
That's what the board decided.
What board?
What board?
Council of Aiden.
Council of Aiden doesn't own the building, the FISB committee owns the building. And, and will, the FISB committee has to vote for when that's going to be.
Okay, uh, next item is SWAT update. Uh, Town Administrator's report, so I'll let you...
Sure, um, just wanted to let you know that at the request of SWAT, Casella did an audit of our recycling contamination rate and, and they did it by trash route. And the results were Monday's rate was three point one percent, Tuesday was three point two five percent, Wednesday was eleven point eleven percent, Thursday was eight point fifteen percent, and Friday was eleven point six one. So our average is seven point four four percent.
Monday's the last week.
That's because of us.
Malden's, Malden is...
Where's Malden?
Malden is now fine.
Sixty. Malden's on Friday.
What are you throwing, John?
The, um, the top five contaminants are plastic bags, film like, um, case wrap, which is the biggest issue so far. Um, the second contaminant was soiled and used paper products like paper napkins and single, single-use drink cups. Um, the third was textiles, the fourth, well, fourth was tanglers like extension cords and the other, last one was scrap metal pots and pans. So what we've done is we're going, we're updating the SWAT webpage and on the webpage there's a, um, a sheet that said, that's what to do with. So we're updating that what to do with page and letting you know where you can bring those items and hopefully the next time we do this, we'll have better numbers, although these numbers aren't bad. Um, we're also going to work on posting a couple of videos on the recycle center, on the SWAT page and, um, hopefully that will give people some tidbits on what they can do with their items.
Do you know how we compare this overall seven point four four, how we compare with other towns?
I do not, but that's a really good question.
Yeah, I don't know. I hope you do better than that number, I don't know what's possible.
The, Casella did say it was a good number.
Right.
So I can get that information for you. Um, we also had, actually, we had our first municipal vulnerability plan meeting last week. Mr. Ruto attended, represented the board. Um, our second meeting is scheduled in, on March twenty eighth and we're preparing for our all-day resilience building workshop. We picked the date for that, which is going to be May fourteenth here at Town Hall from eight until three o'clock. And we identified at our meeting the stakeholders who should be, um, invited to that. I have an invitation, I'm going to begin to, um, get through my list and send those out. And we identified, I think it was like thirty-five to forty people, um, who should come, like the railroad, um, the jail, um, you know, N-Star.
First, all our, all our boards that we think are connected.
All our boards, but, um...
And then N-Star, I think Charter, I think we talked to all...
Charter, um, there's, there's a...
Some big business owners in town.
Big business owners and some people who've been in town for a long time. Um, and it, it was, it was a good meeting, um, and, um, look forward to the next one and then to our event, which will be on May fourteenth. Um, when we were looking at the building department, um, fees, I thought it might be a good idea to revisit the liquor license and the business license fees.
Is FEMA and MIMA invited on the last thing? Are FEMA and MIMA involved in, in the vulnera- vulnerability piece?
No, we didn't mention, did we mention them?
I mean, because they, they...
Fire chief mentioned, he was...
Fire chief has his cert team and he has, um, I can't, I don't think he...
They have, they have a list, they...
He has, he has some people that he suggested we invite.
You might want to look into MIMA because MIMA has, they have people that this is what they do all day, every day. Um, and, and MIMA and/or FEMA, I mean, would go through MIMA to go through FEMA anyway, but you reach out to, to MIMA and ask them, because they might have, they'll have some people that can not only attend, but they have some good ideas, this is what they do for a living.
Mm-hmm. We, one of the, um, we have a representative from DCR with us and she's worked on two other plans and they gave us a copy of what they did in the town of Holden. Um, so, okay. Now, um, I, in your packet, I put a license fee survey for your liquor licenses and for your business licenses. I don't know if you want to look at them and if you want to make any changes. We haven't done any changes to any of those since the year two thousand, but if you would like to make any changes to those fee schedules, we could schedule a public hearing.
I don't, again, I'm sorry, I don't, how do we compare? I don't have that.
We actually, you didn't come through?
I could do.
It's in the agenda.
Yeah, it's not, no, that was way back. It just was out of order, that's all. Okay, go ahead.
Um, actually, we're in pretty good shape. Um, I think we, we possibly could probably, um, we, our, um...
Pretty much on the...
Liquor licenses are eighteen hundred, some people are at two thousand, twenty-two hundred, twenty-five hundred, but there are people who are lower as well.
So we're at fifteen.
But, you know, if you want to look at it at your leisure...
Oh, I mean, if we're, if we're comparable to other towns, I don't think we need to have a public hearing and change them, right?
Okay.
Eighteen hundred.
As I said, we haven't done anything for nineteen years, so, and every year we go and renew the liquor licenses and everybody said you're still at the same fee. We are...
Just the all alcohol, we could...
Can you send this to me in, in Excel format so I can play with it and, and I'm looking at the numbers? If I had Excel, I could manipulate it and...
Okay.
Well, really, I mean, think about that, nineteen years, they haven't raised the rates.
Yeah, the only one that we look like where there's a lot of towns that are higher than us is the all alcohol.
Yes.
So I think, I mean, you know, we can set down, we'd have to set down a public hearing, right?
Yeah, definitely. Definitely, we should definitely do that.
And if we do it now, we can notify the people for next year and that way they have an entire year to know that you're gonna raise your rates.
How about the 17th of, um, April? And then you have another.
Okay.
There's two, isn't there?
And the next one is business license fee survey, consider.
Yeah, I, I think we're. I don't see any need to make any changes there, but.
When was the last time these were changed? Same thing?
Well, we changed, the only change we made to this is we added the donation bins. Um, but, so that wasn't a change to the fees, it was just another fee that we added on.
So why don't we just put them both on, just in case, in case we want to, uh?
If you could send that in Excel as well, please.
April 17th.
Don't you think the board of health increased the prices for the businesses? Last year, the board of.
Board of Health did, yes.
Yeah, Board of Health did.
That's gonna, that's gonna do the license though.
These are, uh, these are, that's, these are our fees.
No, that's not.
No, they were, some of the businesses were saying, you know, Board of Health increased the fees last time.
Yeah.
And they said, you know, it's, it's hard to get the business done with all the fees are increasing. So if we go increase the business fees, that's what I'm saying, if it is comparable enough.
I'm not saying to do either, I'm just saying we should, should have public hearing and talk about it.
Okay.
No, I agree.
I've got on bowling lanes. A little long.
You should go up.
Okay, so we'll put both on the 17th?
Yes.
Any, that's it?
That's it.
Incurrence on the appointment of Chris Burgland to the Housing Authority effective March 6, 2019, for a term to expire May 31st, 2023.
So.
Second.
A motion, a second, any other discussion?
I do. No, I do. Nancy. So this one is the state appointment.
Correct.
You want to say some, little more?
Um, basically, the state was notified of the vacancy. If they do not take any action within 120 days, then it goes back to the selectmen who can make the appointment. My question was, we have a policy that we advertise all of our vacancies. I checked with DHCD and I was told because it's a political appointment, we do not have to advertise it. We can go right ahead and take action. We've gone through the 120-day period and now we need to take action on the appointment.
So if I understand correctly, this, uh, Chris Burglord, he did apply to the state?
Yes.
State did not take any action?
Correct.
Okay. Just for the.
So should this be to the housing, the state housing authority, or is it just?
No, it's, it's the housing authority.
West Boylston Housing Authority?
Yes.
Yes.
So representative, but the state usually.
Yeah, so how's he, how does this, so all we're appointing is to the housing authority and then someone else appoints to the state?
No, the state gets a slot on the housing authority.
Oh, and they didn't.
Housing authority is by election. One, one of the seats is by the state appointment.
Yes, right.
So the state person was Eva Gambasie.
Right, so Chris is, Chris stepped up.
So that's the seat they are filling in now.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Very none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Uh, knowledge receipt of resignation from Patty Page as grant writer. Okay, thank you.
Do we have any left?
Well, I'm working on the grant report and what I did is I outreach to all of the grant writers that we have so that I can get a report from them as to what grants they've applied for and received and what grants they've applied for and not received, so we can get a sense of where we are on that. Um, and when I reached out to Patty, um, she said that, you know, after she got appointed, um, she got another job, so she's not interested any longer. But we have two other grant writers and I have emails out to them and I'll package all that up and get it to the board.
Nancy, she's not from our town, right?
She's not.
She's from the Sterling, Sterling resident, yeah.
Okay, um, announcements, the town, uh, the town received its payment in lieu of taxes from the Department of Conservation and Recreation in the amount of 685,581.59. Just announcing that, thank you so much for that.
How much was that last year, do anybody know?
I don't think it changes that much year to year, does it, Nancy?
It was 68, no, it was identical.
We're gonna get a cost of limit.
So I thought that the pilot was, pilot payments from the DCR were supposed to be the equivalent of what we would receive if it was taxable property. Is that, is my understanding of that incorrect? Because it.
If that was the case, we'd be a lot richer.
No, because it's all open space land, it's not, it's.
Oh, I see.
It's not subdivided, it's.
Yeah, okay.
If we just saw the taxes for that piece of property that the guy wants to give us, it would be a lot more money.
What it says is that the watershed pilot can never be less than the previous year's payment.
It definitely can't, it never be more either.
Although I was told that if we had a split tax rate and the commercial rate was higher, that they would have to pay the commercial rate.
So it must be on your tax, you're right.
Yeah, so, uh, it, can you look into that and see what the, what the rules and regulations are surrounding that? Because that was my understanding, it was based on what the taxes were gonna be. Cause I asked this question when I was on the finance committee and that's the answer I, I think I got.
I didn't realize that.
Sure, we can find that out.
What's the breakdown, 2011, the OR property valuation, 2010? Tax rate 18.
Yeah, see, so it's.
So you say it sets value, what's the set value?
So they're looking, DOR prop, assess, the DOR property valuation is 20 million 540, multiplied by the rate.
Of 1853.
So they're, according to this, they're paying twice what they're supposed, not supposed to, twice what the minimum pilot amount would be, could be.
Announce, okay, announced that the community survey will remain online until March 31st. Residents are encouraged to take the survey and give us their opinion, I mean, input. So we're doing pretty good, what's in, that we at, 390?
No, we're above 400.
Yeah.
We're above 400 now.
Okay, so we're gonna let it go for a couple more weeks and then we'll, um, start analyzing the results, so. Anything else, Nancy, that's not.
No, that's it.
Future agenda items, go Pat.
Um, I'd like to add to a future agenda, a discussion of the board to see if we want to make a written policy of the board to, um, require that we include local, like by local, I mean, West Boylston-based vendors when, when we are soliciting quotes for whatever services we're soliciting quotes for.
Okay, anything else under agenda items, future agenda is our selectmen's reports.
I think we are still in the early stages of election. So the one question is coming up is, you know, where the election's going to be. Is it the church or is it going to be the senior center?
It, it's going to be the senior center.
Definitely?
Yes, it's gonna be the senior center and we're going to, we have to provide notice and I've been working with Elaine and we're going to put the notice in the mail that goes to the residents.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second, any other discussion? Very none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?